Good evening. At 6:30 PM, Monday, September 19th, 2022. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call a meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing in one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you had a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everybody's present, and you have a form.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items of discussion or questions on the consent agenda? See and none, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Agreed.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes. I have no mayor's remarks this evening. We'll move on to the administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed in 4A of the agenda is a summary of term sheets solicited from local financial institutions for the financing for the pickleball courts. We're pleased that Clay County Savings was able to submit the lowest cost proposal at 4% interest, as was projected by our financial advisor, Piper Jaffrey, enclosed his proposed ordinance that authorizes a lease purchase agreement with Clay County Savings, and Megan Miller and said attorneys are here tonight to answer any of the board's questions.
Any questions or items of discussion from the board? Now, can we read the proposed ordinance? First reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the lease purchase financing of a pickleball complex for the city of Carney, Missouri, and approving certain documents and actions related to the financing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the lease purchase financing of a pickleball complex for the city of Carney, Missouri, and approving certain documents and actions related to the financing.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
And Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you guys for being here. Have a good evening.
Appreciate all you did. You made it so simple for us.
We do appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Take care. Mr. Mayor, we have Nathaniel Thomas and Rob Wilson here of Accounting Solutions. They are to, they have presented or prepared the annual financial statements and audit of the city records, and Nathan is going to speak, I think. And that's been enclosed as a separate document, and he'll be referring to different page numbers on that as you go through it in five minutes, right?
You said it, not me. We can streamline this. Well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. As Jim said, we've concluded the financial audit for the fiscal year ended March 31st of '22. At this point, we've had the opportunity to review it with both Jim and Sheila. And then I, my understanding was it was included to the members of the board and Mr. Mayor, the package for the evening this evening. So, no interest in going through a 69-page document line by line, but I'll hit on some highlights here, and please feel free to stop me at any point if you have a question. All right. Turn with me to page four if you want to. Page numbers are on the bottom middle, page four. Call your attention towards the top, first bold, the opinions paragraph. This is what's called a clean or an unmodified opinion. It basically just states the financial statements as presented in this report are accurate, and they represent the financial position and activities for the year end of March 31st, 2022, for the city of Carney. That's what you're looking for when you engage an independent third-party audit firm like ours to come in and do that, so there were no material weaknesses. We obviously test on a sample basis, as you guys very well know. We can't look at everything, but we test based on materiality. So, thank, we focus in certain areas. We also were engaged to do the cash-to-accrual conversion or GAAP conversion, generally accepted accounting principles. And just a quick Cliff's Notes version on that. So, obviously, the way that the books and records of the city are kept is money in, money out, right? You know, from a budgetary basis, as is common in a municipality environment. So, we go and look after year-end for accruals, if you think of them that way, like what are accrued expenses that were attributable to this period that were paid after year-end? We go grab those, and we move them into this year's financial statements. We do the same thing on tax receivables, accrued interest on debt. We book the debt and allocate the principal payments to draw those balances down, and then any capital asset purchases where the loan is showing just the dispersment recording that purchase will capitalize and then depreciate those through the audit report. So, I'll show you guys a couple of those. Page seven, if you flip with me. Page seven, statement of net position. This view, pretty self-explanatory, the first column's governmental activities, the middle column's business-type activities, which of course is water and sewer, and then a total. So, going down that governmental activities at year-end, 14.29 million in cash and investments. Capital assets, 1.6 million, assets not being depreciated, think of that as land, and then assets being depreciated, net of depreciation, 32.8 million. Net pension asset, 2.18 million. That's all things related to the two loggers plans. So, anytime we're talking about those plans, you look at it of what's the, what's the financial health of those pension plans? And the answer is extremely strong. So, when you've got a net pension asset, it basically means that there's a surplus in the assets of the, of the two loggers pension plans in excess of the projected liability by the actuarial valuation of 2.1 million. So, that's great. We'll see here later in the report that you've obviously received the benefit of investment returns during the current year, which we would expect, knowing that we're sitting here six, almost six months later, for that to come back a little bit in the current year. But that's where it stood at that point in time. From a liability standpoint, get your eyes on the long-term obligations. You've got due in less than one year, so think short-term, 1.65 million. That's literally just the principal payments on those debt vehicles, and then amounts due in greater than one year, 28.9 million, we'll call it. That is all the long-term debt, as well as the accrued vacation sick leave payable, that type of stuff. All right, so net position, 20.47 million in governmental activities. 3.95 million of that is invested in capital assets, which basically is that capital assets net of depreciation less the long-term obligations. Then you've got some restrictions there, and then probably the most relevant number, what's unrestricted or can be used for any purpose? And that answer is 12.15 million at the end of the year. Middle column, 3.1 million in cash, about 500,000 in land, not being depreciated, 20 million, just north of 20 million, capital assets being depreciated, or 23.97 million in assets. The big liabilities are about 929,000 in short-term debt and 8.88 million in long-term. For total, total net position in the water and sewer, 13.78 million at year-end, of which about 3 million is unrestricted or can be used for any purpose. Page eight, let's go through to page eight. So, the, the big question is always, how, how did the, what was the end result? What was the bottom line, right? So, in the bottom right-hand quadrant, you've got total net position increase for the city, 6.88 million in the year. Of that, 5.6 million was for governmental activities increase to arrive at that $20 million figure, and 1.26 million was related to water and sewer to arrive at 13.78 million. Obviously, when we're talking water and sewer, it's very capital-intensive, right? You've got money coming in, that's going to be used on future projects, so that's why that surplus is there to use more of the timing issue, if you can get it that way, right? Just north of that, or just above that, you've got the tax revenues. You've got property taxes, 1.89 million, sales tax, just north of 6 million, and franchise taxes coming in, at about 778,000. And then lastly, the CARES Act, 1.1 million received in the year. Going up to the upper-left-hand corner, and I promise this is the one that I'll spend the most time on, and then we'll go a little bit quicker on the other financial statements. Charges for services, so upper-left, 1.05 million. You can see allocation across the different departments. Capital grants, 259,000, and then on the far left, expenses of 8.25 million. Lastly, in the middle, business-type activities, water and sewer. Charges for services were 4.47 million, expenses were 3.2 million. So, that's how we can arrive at that excess or surplus of 1.26, I mentioned. Page nine, if you flip with me to page nine. So, as we go throughout the report, it gets more and more detailed. And all I mean by that is this view is basically all the different governmental funds broken up by general, highway construction, go-highway bonds, and then your non-major governmental funds. So, these are the same numbers that we just saw on page seven, statement of net position, with two main exceptions. One, the capital assets aren't recorded here. That's when we get to more of that budgetary basis that we were talking about, where the dispersments go out, and then the long-term debt's not there. So, your principal and interest payments flow through on the next page. All right, page 10. Page 10 is a reconciliation of those two different views. So, page 10 takes it from page nine and reconciles it to page seven. And again, those are really two things, capital assets, long-term debt, and then you've also got your pension, governmental accounting standards related things that are in there, too. Page 11. Page 11 is statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for governmental funds. Again, these are the same numbers we've got, except for those capital expense outlays would be in the expenditure section, and then your debt service has its own section about in the middle of the page, where you've got the principal and interest called out there. So, if I just kind of hit highlights on that, decrease in general fund, 260, or excuse me, 564,000 in the year, increase in highway construction, net position of 35,000, increase in go-highway bonds, net of a pretty sizable transfer in of 274,000, and then non-major governmental funds, really combined and everything else, 1.3 million increase. Page 12. Page 12 just reconciles that view we just looked at, page 11 to page eight. Again, it sounded like a broken record. We've got the pension, capital assets, and the long-term debt that are your reconciling items there. Page 14 is a really nice view, just to see standalone water and sewer. So, there's your balance sheet, if you think of it that way, statement of net position in government environment. You've got 3.1 million in cash, 295,000 in accounts receivable, and that's exactly what you think it is, right? Water and sewer going out after year-end, and what was received after year-end and that was attributable to this period. The capital assets, again, these, these are all going to be identical to what we saw on page seven, statement of net position, because water and sewer or business-type activities are always recorded on this GAAP or accrual basis. So, at the end of the day, you get that net position of 13.78 million. Page 14. Page 14 is statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position for water and sewer, 4.46 million in charges for services. We allocate the operating expenses to different categories, personal services, 742K, contractual services, so outside vendors, just north of a million, supplies, 637,000, and then depreciation of 525,000 on the year. Net increase at the very bottom there, 1.26 million through the year. Page 15, skip over that pretty quickly, it's just a cashless statement for water and sewer, cash increased in that, 106,000 in the year. Page 16. Page 16 is the statement asset liabilities for agency funds. So, agency funds, think of those as monies held on behalf of others, right? So, you've got municipal court, you've got road district, you've got community improvement districts, the CIDs. So, those ends and halves aren't run through the city's financial statements because it's money held on behalf of others. So, this is just a snapshot at that point in time, right? March 31st of what the balances were, 1,300 in municipal court, 214,000 in road district, and then about 550,000 in CIDs. All right, I'm going to pause there before I get to the notes. Any questions from the board or the mayor? Beautiful report. Page 25. Page 25, there's a board compensated apparatuses towards the top. About halfway through that page, it calls out what the accumulated sick leave payable is. So, for governmental funds, that figure is 507,000 at year-end. Proprietary, it's 96,000. Page 28. Page 28, very top, the last part of note one, just breaks down cash and investments by classification. So, you've got traditional depository accounts or money market accounts of 11.17 million, CDs of 5.67 million, and then short-term investments held in trust or the bond reserves of 594,000, for the total cash at year-end of 17.4 million. Below that's the allocation to government and proprietary, which we've seen on the face of the financial statements already. Page 29. Page 29, note three, the very top, reconciles both the go-bonds and the revenue bonds. So, we've got the beginning-of-year balance, the debt service on those to get to your year-end balances. So, you've got 28 point, 28 million in the go-bonds and 205,000 in the revenue bonds at year-end. Behind that, we've got the, the amortization schedules for those. We group them each in the next five years, just so we can see the debt service that's going to be on those, and then five-year groupings after that. But I'll have you flip to page 32. Page 32, note four, very similar to what we just looked at, but the other debt vehicles. So, we've got capital lease obligations payable for government, just north of 2 million at year-end, and 9.5 million for water and sewer. Page 41, and what you're flipping over is a lot of the amortization schedules for what the debt vehicle is. Page 41. All right, note five, pension plan. Draw your attention to the bottom right-hand of the financial table there. So, that far-right column is a reconciliation of those two pension plans. You've got loggers, one's a general one, one's for police. So, this is the comp, combined of those two pension plans. Beginning of the year had a surplus, or that net pension asset I referenced, of 222,000. Increase during the year of 1.96 million to arrive at the surplus or net pension asset at year-end of 21.8 million, that we saw on the face of the financials. But obviously, in the middle there, you can see net investment income was 2.2 million. So, this is going to have some waves in it, right? You know, as we see the, the general market returns. But it's a good new story at this point. It's always been a good new story, as long as we've been involved with the city of Carney. So, it's, it's nice to have this conversation with you guys, being the exception to the rule where you've got that big of a surplus. Page 47. Page 47, note 12, a cooperative agreement with Carney Westside CID. This is just showing the total payments over the next three years will be 223,000, of which 16, almost 17,000 is interest, so principal payments or the amount we saw on the face of the financial statement, 206,000. Next page, page 48. Page 48 is basically appreciation of both the additions from a capital asset standpoint, as well as depreciation in the year. So, at the very bottom, you've got the breakdown of 1.3 million in governmental activities, depreciation, and then the water and sewer of 525,000. And then up top, in the additions column, you've got 750,000 in adds for land. You've got 2.2 million in adds for infrastructure, buildings, building improvements, and machinery and equipment in the year for governmental. And then from a business-type standpoint, you've got machinery and equipment, water and sewer lines, and all things related to the plants, about 844,000 in addition. So, all in, about 3 million invested in capital assets during the year for the city. Page 56. So, page 56 really gets down to breaking it down by the various funds. This is non-major governmental. So, earlier on page nine, where we saw the general column, the two major programs, and then the non-major, which is a combination of everything else, this is the feeder document for that. So, the far-right-hand column, the totals that we've got there, for example, 2.6, 3 million in cash, that's ties back to the non-major governmental on the statement of net assets on page nine. Page 57 is the same from a revenue expense standpoint. It ties back to page 11, the feeder document for the non-major governmentals. Page 58 is the same for that general column. General, and then that view is actually a combination of your, your general fund, number tip, you know, fund 10, as well as four others, sales tax, part capital fund, cemetery, and part to get to your total general funds. And that, again, page 58 feeds into page nine totals. And then, as you might expect, page 59 feeds into page 11, activity costs. All right, I'm going to have you go to, we're going to skip over 60 through 65. Those are budget actual comparisons. We get that from Jim's budgetary reconciliation. We take a tie and make sure that all the actual is tied to the earlier part of the financial statements. I'll have you go to page 66 and 67. Page 66 and 67 are required supplemental information related to the pension standards. So, page 66 is really just a 10-year schedule of pension contributions. It shows what was contributed and how that compares on a percentage of payroll. And then page 67 is a 10-year running history, which really is that footnote five that we looked at, which shows you on that 2021 column that it was 21.8. I will call out that the actuarial valuation for loggers is done on June 30th. So, it's a June 30th, 2021 report. That's why sometimes you see that date referenced here. And then we go grab all the subsequent contributions from the city on behalf of employees to bring that number up to date at the financial statement date. So, that's kind of how we arrive at that. All right, lastly, page 68.
I could ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
So, one thing, and I apologize for not just not grabbing my attention for now, but the net investment income for 2021 shows 2.2 million when?
From a logger's standpoint?
Yeah, previous years, it was, they were from 100 to 500K. That just sticks out. That's, that's actual?
It is. So, just as a kind of a background there, so we reach out directly to the loggers, and we get their actuarial evaluation. There's actually a pretty robust report, which gives us, is a feeder document for our footnote. So, we go in there and grab the totals. It is specific to you guys as a city, whereas you've got, at least the county employee retirement fund as an example, SURF in the state of Missouri basically just says, here's the total bucket, and they give you your little percentage based on contributions, and you've got to allocate it. These numbers are specific to the returns in the activities of the city in those two pension funds. Definitely can go back and validate that, but I, I can, Mr. Mayor, probably, I can guarantee that that's, that's the right number, because we, everything ties back to that 2.18 million surplus number.
Yeah, one, one thing to consider there is that this is a look at the 21-year, so obviously, investments were much stronger that year. You're going to see a switch next year, you know, based on current numbers. So, it's nice to have that positive there for last year, because we're probably going to lose a lot of it this year.
Can you, can you explain to me on page 66, where it says contribution deficiency of 10,0899? Is that a true debt? Are we in the hole for, for that, for the, that pension?
So, that, that comes from the scheduled pension contributions. It, it's basically stating that the contribution made was 201,000. The actuary has come over the top and said that number should have been 212,000. So, that $10,899 is something that probably was a timing issue in terms of contributions getting added to there. We obviously just, you know, the financial statements themselves, independent of the pension stuff, are just based on the contributions and money going out. We go to the loggers' reports and validate that. But again, we were kind of relying on the actuary at that point for, for what they're saying it should have been versus what it was.
One other thing to consider there is that because you have, overall, you have a net pension asset, that usually the loggers will lower your contribution rate that's needed, because you're actually overfunded at this point in time. So, that's probably why you see a little bit of a decrease in the current year, is because you're actually paying in less than would be normal. Because under a normal, you're one of the few cities that has, has a positive asset there, usually because when they're looking at the pension contributions, this is if everybody was to retire today, you have enough funds to pay out everybody's retirement. Well, obviously, not everybody in the city is retiring today. So, typically, you will see a liability overall in, for the cities. So, you're in a rare, kind of a rare instance where you have a, a net asset.
No, I just noticed in years past, we didn't have that, not something we do.
We'll go, if it's acceptable, we'll go back, and we'll validate that to the 2 million investment return before we issue. We'll go back, and we'll validate that $10,000 figure that we're seeing there on page 66, just to make sure we've got anything covered up. But again, I'm, I'm rather confident that it is. All right, so page 68 and 69. This is basically a compliance report. So, this is a technical term, but because there were federal funds received in excess of 750,000 in the year, obviously CARES only got you guys there, a single audit is required. That's something that we're working on, and in the next couple of weeks, we anticipate having that final report on that. That's something that gets reported to the Federal Product Clearinghouse. That deadline is December, December 31st. So, we've got some time on that. Those are real relevance from a timing standpoint as we sit here today is the state auditor's office has a six-month filing requirement, which obviously, we want to have the issued approved audit report prior to the end of this month, so that we can put that in front of them and meet that requirement. So, any questions before I get to the management letters and kind of type those on? Okay, so in your packet, I think there's, there's two more things directly behind the audit report. One is a required communication letter, which has our letterhead on it. It basically is from us to the board and the mayor, just stating that we, we completed the financial audit as engaged. I've gone ahead and signed that. On the very last page of that, I just always like to call it to the attention so nobody's wide-eyed. We've got two things on there listed, just basically disclosing that we're preparing the financial statements in the NOC audit, as well as, at that point in time, just due to the size of the city and staffing in the accounting and finance realm, there weren't some of those operations and duties that some bigger entities would have have to report, but just, you know, from our short time together with Sheila and Jim. Sheila's got some great ideas to, to put some things in place here in the coming days that next year we can probably knock off on the both of these. So, that'll be good. And then lastly, there's a letter, which is a management letter. We've just got just a base lock city of Carney letterhead on there. That's the inverse of that, right? From the board stating that they, you guys believe we've concluded the audit as of late. With that said, seeking approval to issue and sign the audit report and get it over to the city administrator for filing with the state auditor.
Any questions from the board? See and none, can we entertain a motion to approve the Accounting Solutions Financial Year 2022 financial audit?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that concludes my report.
Let's move on to public requests and petitions.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed in 5A is a new boundary map of this year's Oktoberfest to be held October 1st, 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's a smaller boundary with smaller hours than the, I say, it should be west Washington that this is going to be involved with, and Lyons Park will not be included in this area. And therefore, we're recommending approval of a special liquor license to serve alcohol on, in the public right-of-way, as the ordinance provides for. That would be issued to the Carney enrichment council.
Any questions from the board? It looks like the applicant is here this evening. Executive Director for the Carney enrichment council, Kurt Hamilton. Seeing no questions, can we entertain a motion to approve the special liquor license for the Carney enrichment council Oktoberfest?
I'll make a motion to approve the special license for the Oktoberfest.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations, Mr. Hamilton. Thanks for being here.
Take care. Mr. Mayor, enclosed in 5B is a staff report explaining the final plat of Arby's submitted by National Retail Properties at their September the 12th meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended 6 to 0 to recommend approval of the final plat of Arby's, subject to staff comments. And David Favela will give the board a summary report, and the board liaison, Kathy Barker, may have additional comment.
Any comments from staff?
It's a long-lot commercial plat. There is a little bit of right-of-way that will be dedicated as part of that plat, so plat is appropriate for the case, too. It's approved unanimously at the planning and zoning meeting, and Steph has added for the comments, other than recommendation of approval.
Anything from our liaison?
I just wanted to let everybody know, the reason that we're doing this is because there wasn't a plat, I mean, original, when the original property was built, there wasn't a plat created, so we needed to have this done.
Did you ever have any luck discussing with Arby's, the, maybe mowing down some weeds and securing the property?
I think they did that once already.
Okay.
Maybe they need to do it again, but I think they did.
Wind blew down the hoop and things.
Okay, great.
Did they say when they were just going to start, if they approved it?
They want to have a building permit issued by October, maybe by mid-October. We have reviewed plans initially. They're still trying to get contractors, get all of their contractors lined up, and then basically filling in all the blanks on what we have left for the permit issuance.
I'm excited it's not going to, that they demolished it quickly. It's going to be rebuilt quickly, unlike the Wendy's, it's not a bus, so. If there are no other questions or items of discussion, can we read the proposed ordinance by title only for the first reading?
An ordinance approving a final plat of Carney Arby's, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
Make a motion to approve on first reading.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Carney Arby's, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
So moved. A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Varger?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Go on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, Dr. Kelly Rager is here, and I apologize for pronouncing that name incorrectly. Is it Rager?
Rager.
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 Rager. She is the owner of Carney Eye Care at 119 East Washington, and she's requested permission to install a handicap ramp into her building. And there was an email request that she sent to you, Mr. Mayor, that's enclosed in 5C. It accompanied a picture explaining the ramp that would extend through the frontage of a neighboring property now owned by Pete Emerson of Geno's. And our, our city attorney, Jennifer Baird, had given us a memo advising us on reasonable requirements when managing our street easement, and that's enclosed in the agenda. We have Todd Smith with us tonight, representing Lobber, and he's on Zoom. Using the city of Alton, Illinois' code as a model policy, we sent her email response requesting that the applicant show how the alteration of the structure for handicap accessibility would be cost prohibitive, and demonstrate there are no economically viable alternatives. And additionally, to use the right of way in front of the neighboring property, staff advised that a written release from both the property owner and the mortgage company would be required. We believe property owners have legal rights to their street frontage and can present claims for damages if it's, if obstructed. And we have, Dr. Rager said that we would, that she had completed those steps back in 2016. We couldn't find any, anything that would indicate that. But at that time, David Pavlich had notified her by letter that the staff was unable to support such a request. And the staff, city staff remains unable to support this request as we have not obtained the appropriate information that we would use to justify utilizing public right of way.
Doc, Dr. Kelly had contacted me. I let her know that I would be in favor of working out a solution to help her improve the access into her building. And after discussion with staff again, she requested to address the board of Alderman direct on this request. So with that, Dr. Kelly, I'm happy to give you the floor, if you'd like to address the board.
I apologize to you guys, I just have to pass them around. Hi, I'm Dr. Kelly Rager and the owner of Carney Eye Care. We are requesting that the board would consider approving us to replace the exterior steps toward building with ramp. Currently, the only way to enter our building is through steps. That obviously presents a challenge and in some cases, an impossibility for access to care in our building. We've had a variety of circumstances, and I can list a whole bunch. But, you know, if a person has a broken lower limb and injury to a muscle that's limiting their mobility, if they have a boot or a knee brace on, or had a knee replacement or hip replacement, it is very difficult to navigate those steps to get into our building. Certainly, there's a parent with a, that is unable to carry their child throughout their appointment, and the preferment for a stroller, coming in, a stroller through that front entrance is, is not possible with the steps as they are. If a person has an unsteady gait due to Parkinson's or otherwise, it is very difficult to navigate those steps. And we've shared that on a daily basis from our patients, from their family members who are coming into assist them when they wouldn't need to otherwise. And then very clearly, for patients that are, require wheelchairs for mobility, it is not possible. It's a limit to access to care in our building with the steps. And so we are asking to just simply replace the steps with a ramp that would make it accessible. Our, our first consideration, going back to 2016, was that we did want the ramp to run in front of our, in front of our building. That would seem like a logical solution. Because of the way that the sidewalk is currently graded, it, it has a pretty steep slope running from east to west in front of our building. And so we had things that I didn't know, but as we had contractors come out, they, multiple contractors had told us that wasn't possible. It's not possible to have a safe slope going in front of our building, just because of the way that the sidewalk is graded. And we tried looking at multiple other solutions, and, and the only solution that any of them could come up with would be for it to run west, which we do acknowledge is not our, our first choice, but appears to be the only choice. We, God, this is what I'm saying, we're going to have to pass around here, just for reference. So, maybe just moving forward to the second page is the best. This is just a very basic sketch of what we're after, where we would like to have a landing level toward front entry, with the ramp extending to the east, which is going towards the old Elam County building now, now owned by Geno's. It would in no way obstruct the entrance to their building. And then we would have a step to, going to west of the landing. We'd have the handrail there, just for safety, kind of, you know, along the front edge of that. The sidewalk in front of our building is two large squares, they're pretty equal in size, about five by five foot deep. The second one, the one that is adjacent to the street would be completely untouched, so we would still allow that full five feet unobstructed. There's no street lamps or anything there that would be even obstruction to pedestrian traffic. We are intentionally proposing that the ramp to be designed in the way that it is, because that would still allow through traffic to pedestrian traffic, as opposed if we closed one side of that off to the west side of the building, or to the landing. On the first page, it's not very clear, one, two, and three, just to demonstrate which three squares would be involved of the sidewalk. There is that seam that's a little bit difficult to see from the picture, but that seam between those two, the, the second concrete square there would be completely untouched by any of the project, and it would completely end by square one, so that the entrance would be completely, to the, the old Elam County building would be completely unobstructed. On page three is actually what the city had provided for me, what they might envision it to look like if we were to do, if they were to consider approving it. This is very similar to what we have, have proposed, with the exception that we were, we were proposing concrete, so it would be in line with the existing sidewalks. And also, we didn't have steps extending out to the front in an effort to have a smaller footprint. We would certainly be open to, to including the steps going out towards the front of that in the plans. We just thought it would probably be favorable to have the smallest footprint possible, and we didn't include that in our proposal. We have spoken to the owner of the building at the east of us. He's assured us he's understood the limitations, and hardship that puts on people when, when there's not accessibility into our building. He's assured us that he's supportive of our plan. We've asked him if he'd like any modifications. He has said there are not. We have received a bid from Loder Concrete out of Hold to do the work. We're not asking for any city or taxpayer funding for the project. We, we plan to entirely fund the project ourselves. And that's the first tab of what I have typed up. Do you, what questions?
Any questions from the board?
I'm just curious, I know you're going west, but it's into your building. How come you're not going east?
That's what I was saying at the beginning. The way the sidewalk slopes going east, we wanted to go east. The way the sidewalk slopes, it's not possible for us to have a safe slope ratio.
It won't be ADA compliant, but it slopes too much. They only allow so much fall per foot.
The only way I can see that we could do that, and I just can't imagine this would be favorable, I wouldn't be happy if it is, would be for us to slope it to the east at an acceptable slope. By the time we reach the edge of our building, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be level with the sidewalk. It also would not be a safe slope. Then we could have a switchback, but then would come again in the front of our building. That, that seems like an awful solution, because that would have been creating a step going down at the attorney's office, which would kind of defeat the purpose of providing better accessibility if we were creating a step along the entire length. And also, the only spot right there that is reserved for handicap accessible parking would be further to the west of that. And so we would be creating a situation where a person would park in the street, be able to use that, that one handicap accessible spot, come up through the ramp, and immediately encounter a step. And so that would be kind of self-defeating.
Are there any options at all for coming in the back way? The Carney Historic Museum is an example. On the street, our accessible entry is in the rear at the alley, but we do have a lot of people take advantage of that.
So we, the city has to consider that, and a few objections I have to that. One is, because we are a healthcare practice, we are required to follow HIPAA compliance. And so having an unlocked rear entrance would just instantly be a violation of HIPAA. So in our business, we couldn't do that. The other part of parking around us is, it's very rocky and very uneven. There's no marked parking spots near our building. There's certainly no parking spots that are marked and reserved for handicap accessibility. So I think that would be a challenge, even if HIPAA weren't, I mean, right of way HIPAA, we just can't do it. But even if HIPAA weren't a requirement for our business, I think that would be a challenge. I think also communicating, you know, for a person who pulls up to the curb of our building or drives by, I think they would immediately see those steps and assume that wouldn't be a place that they would try to seek care. The other objection that I have is just on a, on a personal level. The, which I hate to say this, since you've acknowledged this for, for you guys, but the idea of us treating somebody with a permanent four temporary, I suppose, mobility limitation, like a segregated population, and how they can't have access through the front, is just not a good feeling. And we, I, I wouldn't feel good about saying it, and we have heard promulgations that are, and wheelchairs have those mobility limitations, how it makes them feel to have to, to request permission to enter a building, or to, to feel like they're second class.
How, how wide's your ramp?
How wide is the proposed ramp? It is, what Laura has proposed is 50 inches wide.
The ramp is 50?
The ramp is 50. The landing is 50. Yes.
So it almost takes up half of the, one, one square, because it's two squares. At least that's what the picture looks like here. I think that they're trying to, to show here.
Yeah, of those.
So they're still over five foot right here.
Right.
Mr. Mayor? Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Doctor, my name is Todd Smith. I'm an attorney with a municipal law firm that is helping on this. I was curious, I appreciate the, the pictures and the diagram you have and the generalized information. Where are you in terms of a specific specifications, something like a blueprint or a schematic? What you've got is, is good for reference purposes, but my concern is the very specific clearances with the sidewalk, exactly how much of this is going to jut out into the sidewalk, our right of way, the city's right of way, exactly where it's going to end up on the other property frontage, the store frontage there. Where are you in terms of getting those more precise specifications?
I mean, I do, I, I'm not sure what you're able to see, but we do have the specifications on, there are the three concrete squares there. And the idea is those three concrete squares are what would be encompassed, no further out than that, no further to the left, no further to the right. We did, one thing that the city had asked of us was to get stamped construction plans.
Yes, ma'am.
For considering approval. They, when we initially asked approval for this in 2016, this is totally unfamiliar to me, and so that seemed very reasonable. I reached out to the concrete company that is, has done business in Carney for years, and that had done the bid for us at that time. I told them we were meeting stamped construction plans, and I cannot give an exact quote, but his was of shock that that was being asked for a project so small. He said he has done work in Carney for years, and he continues to, and he said he's never had to do a stamped construction plan for something like this, which still I was fine with. I said, that's fine, we will do it. Just tell me who I need to call to get it done. He, he could not provide you with anyone, because he had said he'd never been asked for something like that. Still, I was fine with that. I called around to multiple architectural companies to find somebody who would. And when I did find somebody who does do those drawings, their reaction was also a shock. And at that point, then I started to understand better what stamped construction plans were. That, that company had told me that they simply would not, would not do it for a project this small, that they would feel, they would feel unethical charging me the amount that they charge for something that is so small. Still, I was not deterred. I called our contact at the city of Carney and told them the struggle that we were having getting that requirement, and asked for some recommendations of somebody that we could contact, since I still at that time assumed this was standard. And they were unable to provide me with many companies that, that we could contact for that.
We ourselves, as a city, do small similar projects and don't get stamped approved engineer plans. The sidewalk we just poured in front of 105 Main that we did in-house, I don't believe we ourselves received or, or used stamped engineer plans. So that, I find it hard for us to require the same from residents or business owners when we don't always do it ourselves.
I, in principle, am, am okay with this project. But I would like to know how much sidewalk is going to be left, like actual inches, how much sidewalk is going to be left? Is it going to be enough for people, two people to walk side by side? Or is it going to be one, you understand what I'm saying? I'm not trying to be smart. I'm just like, I would like to know exactly how much space is going to be left on the sidewalk.
So that, do you want me to answer that?
If you can, certainly.
Yeah.
A lot of people, yeah, have double-wide strollers in our community, and if they have to go into the street with the stroller.
Right. No, that wouldn't be good. That wouldn't be good. That square out here that's adjacent to the street is five by five. And that would be completely untouched.
You can say there's still, all the way along that sidewalk, along that ramp, there's still going to be five feet available?
Yes.
So the sidewalk is total of 10 feet?
Yes. So this square that's adjacent to the building, like squares one, two, and three, those are 56 inches for some reason, and this is 60 inches.
Okay, but the depth of it, the depth of it is 10 feet?
The depth of, from the building to the street, is addressing.
Yes.
It is five feet plus 56 inches, so 116 inches.
Okay, perfect. Then, at the, because of the way this is constructed, and I'm not a construction person, so I'm going to preface it with that. What keeps a wheelchair from rolling down the stairs?
The width of the landing.
Okay, so they'll be able to stop, open the door, and go in, and they're not going to.
And the, the door opens into your business, right?
Yes.
Not out? Okay.
Yes. Yes. And Loder, he seemed very, I'm sure you guys have heard things from him before. He has many years of experience in this. And he said specifically, it needs to be 50 inches to allow exactly that, to prevent, to prevent there being the risk of somebody not having sufficient.
And they can make, yeah, so they can make that turn and.
I, I should point out, ma'am, the councilwoman's question, that was really the crux of what I was worried about. So our sidewalk has to be ADA accessible, right? The business has to meet a certain level of accommodation, but public property must be completely accessible, right? And so the distance from the edge of this hypothetical ramp to the lip of the curb, right? If you were looking down on it, the remaining part has to be wide enough for a wheelchair. The idea of a double stroller, those are very good practical considerations. But legally, that space has to be. that space has to be ADA accessible width. And so my, my question about speci, and perhaps you all have different diagrams than I do, but this is not a about 50 inch thing. We need to know exactly what that distance is to make sure that it's in compliance. And it's what the lady was asking about, I think.
I, I wasn't trying to say it was approximately. It's exactly 60 inches.
Oh, it's exactly 60 inches.
And as far as construction, when you pour concrete on top of concrete, that, that doesn't bond well. And is it contemplated that those panels would be removed and re-poured? And will you match the, the same texture of, of the concrete that we have in our existing sidewalk?
Yes, and I asked him if there could be any kind of a stain applied that would make it aesthetically blend in as much as possible. And he had said he will do everything he can to match it as closely as possible. He said, obviously new concrete and existing concrete.
Are you unwilling to, to get a waiver from the property owner to the ne, to the east?
I'm not unwilling to do it. I am curious how, how it's expected that a phone call would go for me to a mortgage company.
That would be his responsibility.
That I'm not, that I'm not listed.
He'd have to do that. He'd have, he'd have to, to, to propose that.
And I'm not opposed, I'm, I'm not opposed to getting a waiver from the property owner next door because he, we've talked to him, he said he is very supportive of it. The idea of getting a waiver from their mortgage company, what if he is too busy to make that phone call? And so then that is a reason that we can't have accessibility to our building. And also, what if the mortgage company says, I can't give you rights to, to do construction on property that we don't own because it's not their property, we're not asking to modify their property in any way?
Our, our concern is that there's legal rights to the property owner who, to, for the frontage of his property. And if he's got a mortgage on it, the mortgage company will be interested in, in also protecting their investment as well. And it's, I just point to the statute, Todd, I haven't talked to Todd about this, but the statute on vacating public right of way specifically states that the city can be liable for, for anybody damaged due to the vacation, the street easement. And I would think that, that those kinds of, of statements in the statutes put us at risk for, for, that we don't have total control over the, through the frontage of other people's property.
If we get a recorded easement stating that that's irresponsible.
So my concern is, is, as you all, I'm sure have done this many times, you know, public property is a right of way. It's like a super easement, right? And so you allow the construction on your right of way, you are inherently going to have a certain amount of liability risk, maintenance risk, something that's potentially going to be there for decades. I'm not sure if it's exposed to rainwater or not, that's going to accelerate the maintenance issue. My number one concern is the ADA, does it meet the maximum width? Evidently it does, that's great. So the next, you know, priority of concern is, you know, is this the only way to do it? Next priority concern, are we going to have a liability risk here? Are we going to have to have some sort of assurances about maintenance in perpetuity such, I mean, that would be my suggestion. If we're going to need an easement, we're going to vacate our right of way. However, the property owner wants to proceed, we just can't take their word for it. And I'm, I'm not, I don't mean to imply bad faith at all. I think this is a good idea. A business needs to be ADA compliant, particularly a healthcare provider. Totally agree with that. But we would, I would recommend the, the city seek contractual level protections to ensure in the future, any problems are, you know, properly addressed. I specifically bring the board's attention to the idea that the immunity protection that cities have, there is a statutory waiver for known dangerous defect. Let's suppose the concrete cracked and there was a, you know, a trip hazard and you knew it, you lose your tort liability immunity that cities normally enjoy. So this is not an impossible problem. Again, I agree with the older woman. This is a good idea, but let's work towards a solution. But I do believe that there are a priority of considerations needing to be made.
So where does that leave us?
Well, as, as with, with anything, I mean, we can take direction and, and take, you know, legal opinions, but it's, at the end of the day, it's the board's decision on, on what we want to do here and then how we want to handle it. So, you know, it's, but.
Still struggling with why this can't go to the west.
I think if you, and I would be happy to walk over there if you had any point, I think if you look at it, you'll see. It wasn't obvious to me either, because like I said, that, that was absolutely six years ago when we were trying to do it, how, how we wanted to do things. And so when the first, you know, contractor came out and it's like, this is what I want to do, they quickly said, you can't. And so then I had to thought, because of the slope of the sidewalk, it's not, the sidewalk isn't flat along Washington.
No, it never has been, but, I mean, ADA allows for multiple feet, multiple feet runs without having to have a switchback. So I just, that I have a hard time, that, that sidewalk has always, being a Carney native, it's always sloped downhill. And, but to say that it's sloped so far, because if you've got two steps, you're looking at about 16 inches roughly to the, to the opening of your door, which, that's the case, you're looking at, ADA is going to require you to have 16 feet of ramp to meet an ADA ramp. Because it's a 12 to one slope.
But then you also have to factor in the slope of that sidewalk.
Correct, right. So.
So that's 16 feet if it were on flat land, I'm assuming is how you're calculating that?
That's, that's the problem that I'm having, even with the slope of the sidewalk, I don't see how we're getting to the maximum distance before we have to have a switchback according to ADA. So.
What, because that's not me saying it, that's the concrete, people who are looking at that. What would you need, like I said, that would be my preference too. And I have been told over and over, that's a no, a, a no-go on that. What, what would you need for them to provide as evidence?
Well, I've been in the construction industry and the coding industry for 25 years and have dealt with ADA for that period of time. I'd have to have something, some sort of drawing that, that would prove to me that it can't go to the west along your property.
It's, that's, you said a one to 12 ratio, so that's like what, a 9% grade difference from end to end?
Essentially, it's an 8%.
Eight, eight end to end?
Slope.
How wide does it? Oh, gosh. I've taken so many measurements and that is not one that I can tell you right off. I can quickly get it for you, but I can't tell you permanently.
Is the ramp covered? Would the ramp be covered?
It is not.
Okay. And I think I would also be, again, I think, I, I like the idea. I want to make this work, but I would also be worried about what happens if the building is sold? What happens when you leave the building? And who, I mean, that, that piece of it needs to be now part of the building and whoever owns that building needs to be responsible for the upkeep and all of that.
There needs to be an easement agreement recorded for that.
For me, I struggle with this because this is our older section of town. These buildings are historic buildings. The one right across the street is 150 years old. That's a big deal for our community. We don't have that many older buildings or a stretch with older buildings. And this will forever alter that landscape, that view. We're two blocks and you will take, if there are 20 buildings, you know, you're going to take a percentage of that space and do this on the sidewalk. And then I think if it's been here 150 years and your business is here for 25, but it would stay there a long time after you were gone. So I worry about that and the maintenance and stuff also. So.
Mr. Mayor, for the sake of making, making progress tonight, if this board is, finds this, this is a good idea, we want to make progress and you all want me to, I, I'm happy to set a meeting with the doctor and say, look, let's thread the needle. Let's figure out what the city needs to be comfortable with this. And I can make proposed, you know, a contract easements, whatever the, the property documentation that be. There is some work involved with that, some time. Of course, we don't do that for free. But for the sake of moving to the next step towards making, if the board wants, I, I'm happy to engage with the doctor and get it, you know, potentially come to Carney and cede it for myself and start working on those documentations to get the, you know, the ball moving forward. So I, I do make that offer. I don't know if that's attractive or plausible at this juncture, but if the board wants to move forward, that's, and I make no guarantees that it will ultimately work out, but I certainly in good faith can talk with her and sort out, you know, what can we do about the easements and the maintenance concerns, the future ownership and all the things that have been discussed. I, I'm happy to explore those options with the doctor.
I'll make some, a, a comment and so we appreciate all of our business owners in Carney. We appreciate the fact that you moved into downtown Carney, did a facelift on your building, beautiful business inside. I have no concerns of you not continuing to, to make sure it's aesthetically the same or, or I know that you're going to maintain your business. The one thing I, I would ask the board to keep in mind, well, obviously, once we would, you know, give away, I mean, it's gone forever, so I don't know, it's a question we're have to, I'd like to have with our, our council. Do, do we sell a portion of that ground and how do we determine a value? Because it is public property. But I, I am a voice of, as I originally was when Dr. Kelly contacted me in favor of trying to figure out a way to, to work this out, but also obviously mitigate and protect the taxpayers. So with that being said, could we entertain a motion to approve our council to work direct with Dr. Kelly and staff as needed to continue to, to work on a solution to, to get this back to the board relatively soon for consideration?
So moved second that.
Can I have two questions?
Absolutely.
For clarification.
Yeah.
I am obviously oversimplifying things. I guess, like with the sidewalk out front, I have always understood that's not my property, but I guess it has also been my understanding that it's my, my responsibility to, like, there's no written goal, safety, all of that, that it's my responsibility because it's in front of my business.
There is currently no ordinance on the books that requires that. And that's kind of been a general rule. But can staff correct me? We, we currently have no ordinance that requires that.
It's a common courtesy thing that you maintain it.
Okay. And then just to clarify, your concern about it is that it would change the landscape of that, it would change the aesthetic of it.
Well, this is our only.
Because I can see, if I can see, I can just see so much.
What if everyone starts doing it now? They're like, oh, now that we know.
Wouldn't that be great if everybody wanted to provide accessibility into their buildings?
I, I have no problem with the accessibility. Like I said, this is from a historic perspective, but historic buildings are allowed exceptions and that is a law that I do know of for ADA access to do it in a different manner, which is why, for example, ours over here comes in the back so that we didn't detract from that original front facade. So, but it is, you know, hopefully we can figure out something that will look good and.
It's a little sad to me to think that there's so many things that have to be improved on and that.
It's just me, there are three others.
You know, in a peaceful way, keeping with the sidewalk, which probably the sidewalk wasn't there historically, you know, that's probably something new since, since buildings were created, that we couldn't do something in keeping with that and provide something better for the community. It's just a little bit sad to think that maybe the aesthetic or something else would trump people's dignity, I suppose, and access to care, but I'm sad to hear that. But I understand that everybody has the right to their perspective and that it's just a little sad to hear.
Can I throw something outside the box for a minute?
Sure.
You've been in Gino's, right?
Yes.
And you know, he's got a ramp, as soon as he walks in to go up. Has that been looked at, maybe that's an option?
We have considered that, a few things. Our elevation is different. And so when we had had a contractor come in to look at that, the length that that was going to be run, two things related to that. One was our retail space that holds our displays for our glasses and sunglasses. We've got the two walls, you know, when you walk in. And so the, the length of that, that that was going to need to take was going to limit access to those displays, which would effectively cut our retail space in half. And so the impact on the business was, would be substantial, was one thing. And the other thing too is with it being a much older building, I personally was concerned to alter the, the structure of the building in that way, just when you hear about these older buildings and getting modified and all of a sudden a wall loses its integrity and all, not their problem, not just their problem, their neighbor's problems and all of that. So I was concerned about that.
It's not relevant.
Yeah, but we did consider it.
I believe I had a first correct on my motion.
And a second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Dr. Kelly, may we give our council your email address?
Doc, I actually have a, your carneyicare.com email. If, if it's all right with you, I'd like to send you an email in the morning. Has my contact information and, you know, the idea here is I'm not your lawyer, I'm the city's lawyer, but if the marching orders from this bar or Todd, we want to make this move forward, we want to see how we can get it done, I'm happy to do that for you. And so my, my hope would be to express my legal concerns and figure out ways to get it solved and do that sooner rather than later, not take forever doing it, not bill a ton of time, but make sure, you know, get the, the boxes checked. So if that's all right with you, that's how I'd like to proceed.
Okay.
That's okay? Great. I'll send you an email in the morning.
And then, so I'm watching for that email and then.
Yeah, so our attorney will keep us updated on, on how things progress with you and him. And then once it's at a point, like you said, hopefully relatively soon, whether it's two weeks from now or a month from now at a next meeting, then you will, will need to come back in front of the board for approval to vacate right of way and, and make any of those changes. It takes board approval to do that.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Let us know if you have any other questions and thank you so much for being here, Seve.
Thank you.
Move on to public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed in 6A is a proposed ordinance based on the state auditor's calculations using the latest assessment figures from the Clay County Clerk, which are also enclosed. Public hearing has been scheduled this evening to consider the adoption of the calendar 2022 property taxes.
At this time, we will allow anybody who wish to speak for or against the proposed calculations to come forward, state your name and address for the record. Call the floor open. Seeing nobody move, we'll close the floor for public comment or input. Any discussion from staff or the board on this item?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would tell you that, that our new finance director ran the numbers for us this year, first time that's been done in a few years. And we, we find that the property tax for the general levy is .5042 and the general obligation bond levy is. And the general obligation bond levy is, remains at five cents for a total of 55, a point five five four two tax, dollars in tax. Is that right? Geez, did I say that right? Close enough.
There are no questions from the board. Can we read the proposed ordinance? First reading by title only, please.
An ordinance fixing the rate of tax levy on all taxable property within the city of Carney, Missouri for the year 2022 pursuant to the state statute RSMO 67.110.
Approved on first reading?
Go second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance fixing the rate of tax levy on all taxable property within the city of Carney, Missouri for the year 2022 pursuant to state statute RSMO 67.110.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Alderman Lehman.
Aye.
Alderman Barker.
Aye.
Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We will move on to all business.
And Mr. Mayor, we have Mr. Russ Quinn here this evening, continuing his request for a amendment to our tat, our tattoo ordinance and licensing procedures. Proposes a proposed ordinance that was prepared by Nathan Nicholas addressing those issues as was requested. And seven add.
Thank you. Any questions from the board to either staff or attorney who drafted this ordinance or to the applicant?
One thing that, that I've expressed some, some concern was that in our original conversation, we were limiting the number of body piercing, body, whatever we want to call them. And I don't see that any kind of.
Are you talking like limit?
Yeah, Alderman Lehman. I removed that simply because it was a limitation of one per 20,000, which is almost like giving you a monopoly, Mr. Quinn. And it would be a long time before we get to 40,000, let alone to 20,000. So at least I, I, I'd consider that an unreasonable restraint of trade, if you might, might talk about that. I mean, when we do liquor licenses, we do it. We, there used to be a limitation. We've removed those. But there used to be a population, you know, that, something that equated our size. And our population now is 10,404. So one per 20,000 just didn't fit in my mind as being reasonable. So I'd asked the attorneys to remove that. I'd also asked that they put in something considered separation, a distance separation that I thought one of the board members was wanting from, from churches and schools. That didn't, that didn't actually make it into that ordinance. So there is no, there is no limitations that, that I had asked that they be, you know, something similar to what our liquor license ordinance, which is actually it's only a hundred foot in our liquor license ordinance. Statute will take, gives the city is up to 300 foot door to door for separation for such things. And I don't, I think the, the separation for marijuana licenses is a thousand feet, isn't it, David? Pretty, it's like a thousand feet from door to door.
Yeah, remember, I think it is a thousand.
Yeah.
You can reduce that.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
So. I know you didn't draft it, Todd, but do you have any comment on this to add as part of staff?
Um, those are reasonable. So do you want to remove any ceiling on the number of permits? Or would you propose a, a, a ratio that's more attractive? I, I will tell you, you know, in liquor licenses, you often do see it's expressed, you know, in, in parts per population. You know, it's common for cities to say, we only want to have five liquor licenses or whatever. I don't know if you would want to just say, we want no more than five or no more than three, if you want to project out for the future growth of your community. But, I mean, we can certainly take that out. Happy to do it. But if you do want some sort of ceiling, what would you propose? Or like, we can offer you a range of alternatives, if that makes more sense.
Well, I don't, you know, the, the one in 20 was what was presented last time. And I wasn't in any way advocating that number, but I.
You like that.
I liked that aspect of being able to, because nothing against tattoo parlors, please understand that. But the, I don't know that we want 50 tattoo parlors coming into a town of 10,000 people either. So I, I like the aspect of being able to limit the number of, of this type of establishment, much like we used to limit liquor stores. So, yeah, the one in 20,000, I, I agree that that was, that was probably a little bit overzealous. But, you know, even if we could do a, a one in 5,000, that, that allows for two. Whatever that number that the board feels comfortable with, I just think we need a way to limit the number of establishments.
I'm a, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm a believer in competition and free business, right? We don't limit any other business industry in our community. So I, I think it'd be interesting for us to, to limit, you know, that's just. You know. I, I think it's interesting to, to limit any business. When we don't, any industry, when we don't limit any other industry in our community, we don't limit liquor stores. We don't limit, you know, grocery stores, you know. And so for us to, I think, slap a label on a specific industry, for whatever reason or belief, when we don't any other, I think is, is bad business in my opinion.
Well, I would, I would agree with you. I think that basic economics will take care of that. We're not going to have 50 because we don't have the business to support 50, just like we don't have eight liquor stores because we don't have the businesses to support it until there's enough population to support that kind of business, I think.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would comment that a lot of towns that I deal with have restrictions that are never going to practically matter. Adult businesses is the most popular one.
Why, why, why have rules if they don't matter?
What I was going to say is, is I have towns that want restrictions, no more than 10, and they're never going to get to 10, much like the lady said. So I'm not opposed to removing it altogether.
Yeah, I, I, that, to, to me, that's, that's big government, right? Why have rules that, when they don't matter? Why, it's just.
And the license is renewable every year, correct?
It is, yes.
Based on this. So if there are issues, we can address them at the time of, at the time of the permission issue, right?
Yes.
Any other feedback from the board or staff on the proposed ordinance change?
Well, I, I kind of lean toward David. I, I think that tattoo parlors a little bit different than a regular business. And I love his, his hours that he's, he's wanting to do restrict that and things, I think he's, he brought a pretty good proposal last time. I mean, I don't know about 20, but like we said, but I mean, I think they're. I would feel more comfortable if we had some kind of limitation to it, just because of the nature of, of the business. And, and I believe this gentleman's going to run a good tattoo parlor, but we do know some tattoo parlors that aren't rent so well that are, you know. I mean, I've looked at your, your website and I don't, don't feel that way about yours. But I don't know who else is coming to town. So I don't know. I'm kind of torn on that.
Alderman Holt, I do believe that that's why we have the ability as a city to issue occupation license, to issue business license. And it's an annual review. So just like any other business in the community, if they're not following our rules and ordinances, we have the power to remove their ability to conduct business inside our city. Will be my response to that.
If their permit is, you know, every year it comes up and is reviewed before it's renewed. I, I have to admit, I feel like both of these gentlemen and for our community to have several. And it could be competition. And then it could be less expensive to do it. And lots of people would say, hey, go to Carney. But I am not necessarily leaning that way. So. But I don't know what I would suggest. I'm sorry that that's not much help. But I do like that they will watch their hours and that it is renewable every year and that we can put something in there about, it'd be like our dispensary or liquor stores and so many feet from a school or a church.
So I'm hearing a majority of the board wanting to put a limitation. What, what do you guys have in mind?
Hey, what are you comfortable with?
I mean, personally, I'm comfortable with, with five, one every 5,000. That allows competition.
That's an easy change to make, no problem.
That means right now you, you could have up to two.
Could have two.
Right.
Allows competition.
Who determines the population?
Census.
Census.
So we have to wait every 10 years?
They produce census numbers every year.
Estimated population.
Estimated population.
So estimates would help or we put that in?
Absolutely.
No worries.
Estimated.
Population. It's what the US Census calls it.
So we would issue one license for this business industry for every 5,000 people as determined by the annual US Census population estimate for the city of Carney.
Yeah.
Mr. Attorney, have you got that clear? Is that clear for you?
Yes, sir, it is. I'll make sure Mr. Nicholas gets it in the morning.
Are there any other concerns or changes that the board would like to see for this request?
No, I think other than that, the ordinance is great. But we just lost that, that. Not that we need to control them, but again, we don't want several of them, you know, size.
Yeah, we're already almost at 11, so.
So does this get tabled to the next meeting? Or can Mr. City Attorney, can the board act on this with that amendment?
Yeah, I would recommend that, that we would propose passing, propose, if we would consider a reading by title only of the proposed ordinance with the modification that I stated earlier, that the change would be that we would issue one license for this industry per 5,000 people as determined on an annual basis per the US Census data.
Mr. Mayor, you can certainly do it that way. You could enact it tonight if you wanted. You could make the change by what's called inner delineation. But you could have a first reading tonight and then do a second reading at your next meeting. And I could get it formally typed up if that would make you more comfortable. And that's no problem.
I would prefer to, if we could, to look at doing the first and second reading this evening.
You can write in the side what the amendment you'd like to do and sign it. My, my only hesitation with what you all said is I, I'm not familiar with the census estimate thing. That, that sounds like a, I'm not familiar with that. But the, if the folks there are and, and they're comfortable with that language, I'm comfortable with it too. So if you all want to pass this tonight, you can. First and second reading by title only.
You can read the proposed ordinance with the modification by title only for the first reading, please.
Where shall we put that? Where shall we put that section in there? The permits.
Will we do?
Maybe we could do it in the definition.
Under application or maybe even a separate section under restrictions.
Yeah, I think page five under six 10.054.
That would be the logical place.
And we'll put in an F.
That's where restrictions are.
Right. Licenses. The number of licenses.
Shall be limited to one.
Shall be limited to one per 5,000. The population as per. As, yeah, or as determined.
By the US Census Bureau.
By the. US Census Bureau's annual population estimate.
And Jim, what section is that exactly?
It's going to be six 10.054, item F.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
What about six 10.040? That's where it says a permit is required.
Zero five zero.
Four zero.
Four zero.
Very beginning.
Well, that, that is a better place. Don't you think, Todd?
Can we entertain a motion? Or can we read the proposed ordinance first reading with the modification to section six 10.040 with the subsection addition to the one per 5,000?
Yes, it's an ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri, establish city code regarding body art establishments with the amendment to six 10.040 stating that in addition to what it did state, that the numbers of li, the number of licenses shall be limited to one per 5,000. Population is determined by the US Census Bureau, Bureau's annual population estimate.
Motion approved with amendment.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Second reading by title only, please.
An amendment to the ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri, amending the city code regarding body art establishments, including the amendment to section six 10.040 that adds the, the additional language of the number of licenses shall be limited to one per 5,000 as determined by the US Census Bureau's annual population estimate.
Make a motion to approve on second read?
On second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Alderman Lehman.
Aye.
Alderman Barker.
Aye.
Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Mayor, as I'm sure you would, just make sure that this, the copy you sign has that inner delineation notion.
Yes, do we have a folder? Do we have a folder of these yet?
Yes.
Where are they at?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Let's get them out here. Yeah, we want them out here so she, he can sign that tonight. Well, we need to, we need him to initial that one spot and modify that, those, those.
We have no new business. We have no new business this evening. We do have an executive session noticed up, a closed session per RSMO six, 10, oh, two, one, subsection one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys in six, 10, oh, two, one, subsection two, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate by a governmental body where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect legal consideration therefore. Can we consider a motion to go into executive session at any point?
A motion to go into executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, roll call.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
After we finish our executive session, we'll return to this setting to conclude our meeting.
You are muted. I mute it when we go down.
All right, Brian, can you hear us?
Loud and clear.
All right, at 9:14, we adjourned executive session. We will move on to alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Holt?
Nothing.
Alderman Lehman?
I'm good.
And Alderman Barker?
I have nothing.
Motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:14.